In today's session, we'll shortly be hearing from Ruth Murray, Investment Director within the Sustainable Infrastructure Division at Gresham House, and followed by Environment Bank's Chief Revenue Officer, Henry Byrne, and then Philip Timmins, Principal Estate Surveyor, Hartlepool Borough Council. Ruth and Henry will be sharing expertise on managing risk in habitat banking from robust business models and financial safeguards to the latest legal insurance developments. Philip, well done, followed by speaking on the benefits for Hartlepool. Thank you, and over to you, Ruth.
Thank you very much for having us here today. I'm Ruth Murray and I'm an Investment Director at Gresham House. And we've been really active in the BNG market for quite some time now. And I'm here today with my colleagues from Environment Bank. Environment Bank is a portfolio company of the Sustainable Infrastructure Fund, which is the fund that I work for. And I'll sort of give you a little bit of an overview about how we came to operate in this market, how we've gone about designing a business model that we think is high integrity and has longevity. Some of the different features that we've used to try and mitigate risk, but also make it an appealing solution for landowners, developers and local planning authorities alike. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the risk management tools we use and some that I hope to see in the future. Just a brief overview about Gresham House. We're an alternative asset manager. We have about eight billion pounds worth, nine, sorry, nine billion pounds worth of assets under management. And we typically focus on these four key areas you can see here that we think are themes that are shaping the world we live in. Obviously, the most relevant one as far as Environment Bank and BNG is concerned is nature and capital, and sorry, nature and climate change. My team that I work in is called the Sustainable Infrastructure Team. And what we have been trying to do through a number of different sectors is try and find real asset solutions to deliver societal or environmental outcomes. One of those thematic areas we were really keen to try and find a way to invest in was nature or nature recovery. And actually, that was really, really hard. And if I show you this timeline, we have been looking at nature recovery as an investable proposition for many, many years. And really, the only way in which we were able to deliver the new asset class of habitat banks that we now currently invest in has been through the new legislation that came into force. And we did that in partnership with David Hill, who was the original founder of the Environment Bank. But essentially, we've been working on this proposition since 2019, so well ahead of the new market coming into effect. Because it's taken that long to understand what the legislative framework could look like and then try and design a product that was actually going to be fit for this new market. As you'd expect, some of the delays in the legislation coming into effect and then some of the regulatory uncertainty remains for us to be a big risk that we need to manage as we're investing in new habitat banks. So sort of the key, the key areas that we look at in terms of managing risk, both as we started investing in this business and that we continue to look at in terms of how we manage the Environment Bank business, really are around demand risk, regulatory risk, and then the execution risk of how we actually deliver our biodiversity net gain and so on. I, for my sins, used to be, used to be a lawyer. I spent 20 years doing large infrastructure projects. All of them really were around delivering infrastructure in the way that serves a purpose, but manages risk really, really quite carefully. So it was that thinking that I brought into Gresham House and how we were actually going to take this idea around biodiversity net gain and execute it in a way that worked for the market as a whole. Obviously, doing that without the market actually existing, so quite, quite a challenge to come up with something from scratch. But basically, the way we thought about managing risk with our solution was trying to find a solution that worked for the three groups of key stakeholders who we identified. We've got, obviously, landowners are a key stakeholder, local planning authorities or responsible bodies, and then ultimately the developer. So with, with this prospect of a new market and an ability to attract institutional capital into nature restoration, we set about trying to come up with a framework that would work across all these different market segments. Now, with the landowner market segment, we saw that the majority of our land, certainly in the early days, would be coming from farmer-based landowners. Philip will talk to you shortly about how this translates into a local authority and what it can do for its landbank. But really, what we, we thought to try and scale this market, which is really important when it comes to delivering a new asset class. We need something that's scalable, not just a one-off project. We wanted a structure that would work for landowners in there. And for us, that meant looking at landowners across all the different LPAs in the UK to make sure that we could deliver local solutions to where development was happening. Now, that has meant, and Rory will talk a little bit, he's from our land team at Environment Bank, how we go about doing that. But ultimately, we see that this, this is a really good market opportunity for many, many landowners to diversify their income. And what we've tried to create, rather than a model of buying up land and displacing landowners from land, we actually typically lease our land from landowners and then contract back to those landowners the 30-year maintenance obligations. However, that's very much under the close monitoring, management and oversight of Environment Bank. So for us, the way in which we manage that execution risk throughout the development cycle of a habitat bank is through the Environment Bank having a very active role in both creating and designing the right habitat types through the Habitat Management Plan and then overseeing and monitoring it for 30 years. Selecting the right landowners to go into business with is also a key part of this because we are looking for long-term partnerships with our landowners. So that's another important aspect of what Rory does. Then, of course, the way in which the overall industry manages risk within the BNG market is through the local planning authority or the responsible body oversight. And I'll come on to the next slide to talk about how we've tried to create a solution that gives the regulators certainty in delivery from our model. And then finally, of course, the developers need to have a solution that ultimately outsources risk and gives them price certainty. So one of the, one of the key aspects of our business model was to try and create units that are available upfront, so they're effectively off the shelf for developers who need it at the right time. The habitat banks or the assets that we're creating with Environment Bank are typically landscape-scale projects. So they are big, they're designed to be big, big enough to deliver really great outcomes for nature. But what we do, again, to manage risk and not have redundancy in our stock and to make sure that everything is done in, in a sort of a risk-adjusted manner, is to really look very carefully at the demand metrics in each local planning authority area, in the relevant NCA area, and make sure that we're sizing our habitat banks properly to match the demand of that area. I'm funded by many institutional investor clients, including lots of local government pension schemes. And I need to make sure that the assets that we're investing in are sized correctly and are going to meet their hurdle rates of return. So making sure that we match size with demand is really crucial. One of, one of the biggest reasons for nature projects failing is that they run out of money. Now, this is a 30-year nature project, each of these habitat banks are 30-year nature projects. So what was very important for us when we designed this business model upfront was to think, how do we ensure that these projects are not ever going to run out of money? Because any failure on any single habitat bank would be absolutely terrible for both the market itself, but also the business that we're investing in. So trying to find a way of baking in high integrity and that funding security into our business model was really critical from the outset. The way in which we do that is when the Environment Bank comes to Gresham House to say, we've found a new habitat bank, it's hitting all of these criteria. They are, they will request from us the funding needed to fund this habitat bank for the whole of the 30 years upfront. That way, we can ensure that we are offering fully funded products, projects into the market. And the delivery of those BNG outcomes is not dependent on individual sales. So our habitat banks are not linked to individual developers. They're established in advance, they're fully funded in advance. And it's that fully funding in advance that has created the confidence that landowners and developers and local planning authorities or responsible bodies have in us delivering those outcomes for the long term. The very particular financial instrument that we use to secure that is an evergreen bond that we have placed with a high street bank. Now, because we are funding our habitat banks upfront, what we are able to do for, in particular, the responsible bodies with whom we have the majority of our conservation covenants, is provide them with a bond that says, in the event that we fail in delivering our, our outcomes, our BNG outcomes, this bond will give you the recourse to funds so that you can step in and secure those outcomes yourselves. And, and I think that the ability to access funds to secure those outcomes is so critical. Because without it, it's really hard to see how enforcement from local planning authorities or, or responsible bodies really can happen successfully. So we, you know, we, we created that product. It took an awful lot of effort to try and persuade the High Street Bank that this new market was something that, that would work and how, how it could work. But because we have got funding upfront, we are able to lock that money away and provide that bond, which I think creates that real financial stability in the product that we're offering. And it's something that we pushed quite hard whenever we're talking to anybody to say that you need to think about that long-term risk and how you're going to manage it for both local planning authorities through managing their Section 106 obligate commitments from people or in responsible bodies, because the financial security of the habitat bank operator is key. And for us, this is a market that we want to succeed and flourish. So high integrity and pushing for high integrity in all aspects of the market, not just the way we operate, is really, really very important. Another way that we try and manage risk through the delivery of our, our habitat banks is through cost certainty. And that's another really key way of managing risk. So of course, we are funding a 30-year project. And in an ideal world, we're receiving all the revenue from that project through the, the good work that Henry does that he'll tell you about through selling our BNG units within the first three to five years of, of life. Now, as a funder, I funded something upfront. I get my revenue upfront. I'm then left with a large tail of potential risks to manage. So the way in which we mitigate that risk through our own business model, and it's something that I think many others are starting to do, and certainly something that we find the responsible bodies and so on will interrogate to make sure we are financially secure for the 30 years, is look at those agreements and look at how we are managing risk. So we have long-term contracts, like I mentioned, with our landowners to manage, manage the habitats over the 30 years. However, we have appropriate step-in rights and break rights so that if for any reason those outcomes are not being delivered, we can then step in and do that ourselves as Environment Bank. So obviously, that would always happen before there was any need for an LPA or a responsible body to take recourse under the bond, the evergreen bond that's in place is very much a backstop. But, but this is our first port of call. Within those agreements and within our leases, we have fixed indexation. So again, that's another risk that is managed, that we've, we've banked our 30 years' worth of funding these habitat banks upfront. So we make sure that that 30 year is a fixed price through indexation. All of our budgeting has been worked out on a per hectare basis, and this is from the initial construction costs through to the management costs and all of the, all of the various legal, professional and other costs that go into delivering a habitat bank. And then each of our habitat banks has allocated to a contingency pot for both the construction phase or the habitat creation phase, and then throughout the remainder of that. And all of these features are features that we bake into every single habitat bank to ensure that we are managing risk appropriately. We have good contingency in the event of any shortfall in terms of performance. And ultimately, that we can give confidence to the wider market that we are creating high-integrity products that will be fit for the future. Now, I've talked a little bit about how we manage risk practically. And I wanted to talk a little bit about how insurance can, can help manage risk for both BNG operators like Environment Bank and indeed for regulators like responsible bodies or LPAs. And sadly, when Zen and I spoke about this initially, probably in December last year, I was having lots of really interesting conversations with insurers, but nothing's happened, nothing has moved forward. And ultimately, what insurers are looking for is a big enough market size to create a new product for, where they, where they're going to have a, you know, a good enough rate of return on creating that new product. And I just don't think they've quite seen that yet. One of the biggest challenges insurers have with this market is it's a 30-year project and they really struggle with ensuring something of this duration. I think the most they can really get their heads around is a 10-year project. And I'll talk a little bit about how they've done that in the carbon market. But that 30-year project is a, is a real tricky issue for them. So in the absence of a really neat product that comes from insurance, we look at the standard insurances that are available in the market to try and help us manage risk across that 30-year lifecycle. And essentially, with, with any habitat bank, we see a sort of a bell curve in terms of habitat creation. And the real risk period in terms of when habitat will be created and, and become stabilised is probably in the first 10 years. So we ourselves and we advocate through various other organisations that we're involved in just a, a standard package of insurances, including professional indemnity insurance, which of course we hold because we're involved in the design of habitat banks. So if we design something and it's incorrect, we have professional indemnity insurance in order to help us manage any additional costs of habitat delivery through our own negligence. We have environmental impairment liability for each of our habitat banks. So this is trying to deal with, with the, the sort of force majeure type provisions that come through the BNG metric and the DEFRA metric, allowing us sort of additional time for unexpected events. We also have that layer of insurance if there is a, some sort of natural disaster that, that causes a problem with our habitat banks. And beyond that, there are potentially warranty and indemnity type products that can be adapted to supplement sort of a standard insurance package. But I think any, when we're looking at assessing the financial rigor and this, this financial security of any potential habitat bank operator and making sure that those sort of very standard insurances that are available in the market are in place is just one important step in, in delivering, ensuring that we've got well-secured outcomes. Within the carbon market, and that's, that's the market that I've been using to talk to insurers about what's possible for BNG. They tend to have products that will look at non-delivery risk of carbon credits and insure against that. And they do it through various different mechanics, whether it's warranty indemnity insurance or just a failure of any forward purchasing of carbon credits. The real difficulty the insurance market has is getting its head around the non-fungibility of BNG and nature compared to carbon. So I think that, that, that industry needs to do quite, quite a lot of work to understand how they can offer a similar product to our industry. One thing I think we could all do, certainly local authorities are really powerful in doing this, is talking to their insurers and explaining what the risks are that are left with local authorities or responsible bodies to try and enforce in the event of habitat bank failure. That is something that they could create an insurance product around. And that's something that could link in with some of the British standards and things like that for habitat banking that will actually help protect the high-integrity nature of this market. And then the, the final thing that we use to de-risk, like I've mentioned before, is our contingency pot, which we bake into all of our habitat banks, making sure that there's always going to be enough money there to deliver the outcomes. Because we're operating a whole portfolio of habitat banks, we also have contingency in that we assume we're not going to sell all of the BNG units we create. We always leave some spare and we have a whole portfolio that we can use to manage risk. But as an investor, we found this market to be fantastic in delivering the outcomes that we had hoped for to create a, an investable asset class that's delivering nature-based outcomes. It hasn't been an easy ride because there have been the challenges with delayed legislation. We've obviously had the new consultation that's come out, which has got some positives and negatives because it has at least clarified that there's a real commitment to BNG. But, you know, as an investor, any uncertainty creates, creates unsettling feelings for us. But ultimately, I think we've created a, a product that, that works well in this market. And I'll hand over to Henry and Rory, who'll just share with you some of the practical examples of how some of that risk mitigation is working in practice. And then we'll obviously invite Philip to, to give his, his, his experience.
Thanks, Henry. Yeah. So as, as Ruth sort of alluded to there, I, I'm Rory Hodgson. Thank you for having me on. And I work in our land team at Environment Bank. So I, the land team is established to essentially foster relationships with landowners to acquire sites. So whether that be through leasehold or freehold purchases, we, we sort of work with landowners to, to acquire them for BNG purposes at that sort of front end. So at Environment Bank, we have England's largest network of BNG habitat banks. So this network has been growing over the last four years, and we now have 40 habitat banks which we have secured for BNG purposes. Of these 40 sites, 25 are on the gainsite register, meaning that we are able to sell units for off-site BNG. And while this coverage is, is market-leading, we are aiming to add at least 20 sites per year to satisfy upcoming demand for, for that off-site market. This expansion has been possible because of the attractive offer that we can make to our landowners, which I will set up in, in the next slide. And but as a land manager at Environment Bank, we sort of really target those landowners by trying to foster those relationships. And so to build a bit of a partnership with the landowner so that we can create an agreement to create a habitat bank. It's important that these habitat banks are in sort of key demand areas for, for BNG. And therefore, we do a lot of modelling and research to determine where we need sites, how big they should be, and, and what habitat banks we need to create. If we just go on to the next slide, please, Henry. So as I said, we, we can acquire sites either by a freehold or leasehold, but the, the majority of our sites are at leasehold mechanism. So all of our acquisitions target land which is unsuitable for productive farming and that has a low ecological baseline and is therefore capable of uplift. Because essentially, that uplift that we, that we get on the ecological baseline is what we can sell in terms of units. Typically, our sites are between 20 and 50 hectares, but we can take on larger and smaller sites in specific circumstances. We do also look at specialist habitat projects such as high-districtous woodland or urban habitat. So with our, with our leasehold model, we generally take out a 33-year lease and pay the landowner an annual rent for that lease. We will then generally sublet it back to the landowner or a land manager that they choose to manage the land in accordance with the Habitat Management Plan, which our ecologists will create in, with, in conjunction with the landowner. We then pay the landowner an annual management fee for carrying out the prescriptions of the Habitat Management Plan. We've had real success in getting these agreements set up with landowners. And the main reason for this is our unique model, which is quite different to other, other providers in the BNG space. The reason it's, it's been successful is it provides guaranteed attractive payments and a low-risk profile compared to conventional agriculture. So as many of you will know, agriculture is particularly susceptible to market and government changes. And so this long-term agreement where they can have guaranteed payments is really attractive to the landowners that we work, work with and really acts as a sort of diversified form of income to supplement the other practices on, on the farm or business. So we also have a collaborative approach, which is a real benefit for landowners because a lot of them do not have ecological expertise. They've got loads of expertise in, in managing the land traditionally and through sort of conventional agriculture. But that ability to create habitats is something that really really brings the party. And so that collaborative approach is really beneficial for the landowners. We also cover all of the legal costs, the establishment costs and the accreditation costs for the habitat bank, which can be significant, particularly at the front end. So if the landowner is sort of a relatively small business, those, those initial costs can be a bit restrictive and can prevent them going into an agreement, which is why, where our model really is benefit because we, we sort of cover those additional, initial costs. And as I said, we also provide support to the landowner throughout the lifetime of the agreement. And our habitat banks are designed to fit in with the landowners and their farm while being underpinned by the ecology of the land. So I'll just pass over to Henry now to carry on and talk about how we sell the units.
Thanks, Rory. And forgive me if you all are very familiar with what I'm about to say. And I will share the slides afterwards as well, so I'm going to skim through some of them fairly quickly. And it's just worth saying, we, we've built a team of over 100 people here, so we have as much expertise as possible in-house. It really helps with that integrity piece and making sure we have consistent standards. And where does this process start? When we're working with developers and their consultants? It normally starts with us receiving a metric, which I'm sure a lot of you are very familiar with. The metrics are formula used to measure biodiversity. And ultimately, it looks at how many units habitat contains before development and how many units are needed to replace the units lost in development and achieve the 10% uplift in BNG. Our metric team, so we've got five metric experts in-house, they review every metric, check it for errors. They take into account the gain hierarchy, and we're often working with developers and their consultants quite early in the process here. So we might have to provide them with one, five, 10, 15 quotes based on different site designs so that they can see what the off-site solution and costs look like, depending on how they design their scheme. We're taking into account the trading rules. And we obviously want to make sure everything's done correctly. And it's really important to make sure we follow the trading rules. I won't go into them in depth, you're probably all aware, but I will share the slide anyway. The spatial risk multiplier, which Ruth and Rory have alluded to, we, we want to be providing units from as locally as possible when we can. And because if we're not providing locally, we are providing more units, which ultimately adds more cost to the developer. We do often provide multiple solutions to customers. So it might be the most local units, it might be the most cost-effective. It might be that time is the real, real pressure factor, so we'll provide units that are available on the gainsite register now. And for sites with longer lead times, we'll also provide options from upcoming habitat banks. We'll just try to make sure we basically align with what matters most to the client, critically making sure that the units will be there so that the development is not held up, and that is the most important thing. Once we've gone through all that, we'll get to a quote that works for the client. This is an example. We'll detail the unit's impactive, the distinctiveness, and what we're compensating those units with, what distinctiveness they are, where they're coming from, how, where the proximity is, is it local, is it LPA or NCA, and we'll provide a price. At this point in time, we also, it's also worth saying, we manage an internal stock system. We have thousands of units. And there's a lot going on with those units before they're allocated on the gainsite register. So the technology we use to manage that stock is of critical importance. We do not want to end up letting developers down because we've accidentally double-sold stock or anything like that. It's, it's a critical piece of infrastructure for us, and it's something that we spend a lot of time managing. Developers come to us at different points in the cycle, or their consultants. We're quite often involved from the early design stage, helping them look at what different costs and options there are, helping them understand if there are local habitat banks or not. And ultimately, a lot of developers choose to reserve units prior to, prior to having planning permission. This is just to make sure that they don't get let down and there's no units available when they want to discharge their condition and start on site. We offer two main different routes for developers to purchase units. And they can reserve, effectively putting down a small deposit to hold those units for a set period of time whilst they get planning. If they don't get planning, they can extend that reservation for another period as defined in the agreement. If they don't get planning, we basically keep that deposit as credit and they can use it against the next development that they, they're working on. So we try to make it as easy for a developer to say yes as possible because ultimately, it makes the market run more smoothly. Whether they reserve or they give us a full payment, we take a few steps once they have made that final payment. So we'll update the biodiversity metric, including details of the off-site. We'll provide the details to complete Section 7 of the game plan. We'll allocate the units on the gainsite register and we'll also provide a certificate of purchase. Just to make sure that everyone can see, there's a visible paper trail of exactly what's happening. It's worth saying on the integrity point that it's not just something we talk about. We were recently working on a very large industrial logistics site. And we were not the cheapest solution, although we were equally local as the other. And we were not the cheapest solution, although we were equally local as the other option that the client had. We were actually about ten percent more expensive on a very significant transaction. Their industrial logistics project was being financed by an institutional investor. And they actually chose to go with Environment Bank ahead of our competitor, largely because we were forward funded, we had the backing of the Sustainable Infrastructure Fund and we had the evergreen bond in place. And that was really too attractive attractive to them on a risk management point of view because they want to make sure that they're not going to be associated to anything that fails in in future years. The final thing I was going to just give a quick nod to was there are some very large developments out there. N C S projects, huge data centres, road schemes, et cetera. For some of those projects, we do look at taking bespoke projects on. It works in exactly the same way that Ruth and Rory have described. We would still go through our usual model, we'll still do all the usual due diligence. But we basically go and acquire a local site that matches up with the developer's timelines in order for us to assist them with getting on with development. I have also put an annex of case studies in here, I'm not going to go through them now, but I'll share the slides afterwards so that everyone's got those to have a look at. And that's it, I can probably hand over to Philip to give a a real, real life example of Habitat Bank.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for joining us. I thought I'd just kick off by telling you a little bit about Hartlepool and where it is because I'm aware that lots of people don't know where it is or anything about it. So we're a mainly urban borough, we're located on the north side of the Tees Valley, up in the north east of England. The town was was founded in the nineteenth century on shipbuilding and steel. It's still got quite a big industrial and port sector. But it's also got a big marina, beautiful marina, a national naval museum. And one of the growing industries in the town is the is the film industry, the new studios being created. In terms of planning, our current local plan, which was adopted in twenty eighteen, includes major residential expansion principally on the west and the southwest side of the town, well, being a port town, it's all seas to the east, so there's nothing happening there. And and the current local plan was planned for over over six thousand dwellings. Some of the principal developers in the town noted their Bellway, Passiman and Wyndham Homes. And our rural area, which which isn't that large, but it is there, is on the west and the south of the town. And it encompasses four villages, including the the very historic settlement of Hart, which is just where Habitat Habitat Bank is is located. So it's just a a plan of of the land, it's about thirty four acres. The council has owned land also to the to the west of the village and also to the south of the Habitat Bank land, between between the road there and and the Habitat Bank. And those areas are are let on conventional farm business tenancies. The land itself is is grade three agricultural land, which joined the village. Now, it's originally held with the other land or small holding was let in 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 small areas to small holders, but this is going back a long, long time. And subsequently, the 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 blocks were amalgamated and let in in larger blocks. Now, with this particular land, the ending of, well, we had actually a number of the the two farms we had on the land, both for various reasons, ended their tenancies and that just gave us opportunities for more for more active and useful management of the land. And when we got the land back on the east side of the village, it it wasn't in good condition. It had been grazed very heavily. There was very little fencing. And buildings in poor condition. Now, we let the land that lies closest to the village ship back in twenty twenty three to a a local farmer who has a who's, I think she's a fifth generation farmer in the land in the area. And has has proved to be an excellent tenant and asset to the council in point of fact. And the land to the north and east was reserved as a habitat bank and will let let to Environment Bank in in twenty twenty four. So I get on to the on to another my presentation. What what was this all about for the council? Well, first of all, there's a strategic need for a habitat bank. Whilst the whilst the current local plan has been in place since twenty eighteen and a a lot of the sites have been already built out or have already been consented prior to the the mandatory B N G scheme coming into place in in early twenty twenty four. There are a number of smaller strategic sites and urban sites that to come forward and and be developed will require B N G, quite likely will require offsite B N G. And clearly, in the future, there will there will be a a new local plan brought forward and there will doubtless be further expansion of the town, which is which is which is experiencing quite a good demand for housing. In part because it's a relatively economic place to buy a house, it's not not as expensive as as other parts of of the north east, never mind elsewhere in England. But the council does still own development land, other development land, so that may come forward and and will potentially also develop a benefit from having offsite B N G being available. Obviously, finance, really, really important. Obviously, as a local authority, we're always looking for money. A lot of our income streams have been squeezed on in in recent years. Particularly, well, in in commercial properties, it's a very mixed picture, some of it's prospered and some of it really hasn't. So it's really important for us to find new income streams and to work our estate effectively. So the the arrangement with with Environment Bank does give us a very good fillip to that. And financially, there's the income is is certainly higher than simply letting re-letting the land as as farmland. It does give us great stability, as as the other speakers have mentioned. It's a long term arrangement, thirty two years. It's with pre-agreed rental increases. So there's no question of how to implement lease renewal or rent reviews for a very long period. And also, we're effectively partnered with a a very good stable partner. In terms of the capital size, Environment Bank have have made and are making a substantial investment in our land. Consider around a fencing, for instance, installation of water supply, removal of invasive weeds and and shrub and tree planting. And and clearly, this is something that's that's been done to a good standard and because they they own it for the long term. In terms of risk as a local authority, we are quite risk averse, fair to say. So this is a a low risk group for us. Doing it ourselves would have been much higher risk, would have involved us spending quite a lot of taxpayers' money. This is this is a, yeah, a a low risk group where we have the the expertise of Environment Bank doing this work for us. By the way, the the photos here on the slides obviously are are various bits of the land you can see. Just to give you a flavour of what it's like, it's a bit of a mixture of 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 arable fields, but by the time that we did the letting to Environment Bank, been empty, been unfarmed for about two and a half years. So clearly, from from being grazed down to nothing, a lot of a lot of grass and rank grass and weeds are grown up. So she actually located in in sort of buffer land between Hart Village and and the northern western extent at the edge of Hartlepool. She was protected in the in the local plan as a buffer between the village and the town in order to prevent really Hart Village itself being subsumed in due course in future years into the town itself. The land obviously joins other other farmland, joins the village and the urban edge woodland into which ecological benefits will spill over. And on the management side, clearly, as I've mentioned, the it was the the expertise of Environment Bank is is a strong pull for us and a reason for for working with them. Because as the other speakers have mentioned, they have a they have a strong team of professionals with with experience of establishing habitat banks and understand the the ecology and the business aspects and the land aspects of 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 doing this work. And they produced a habitat management plan which we're able to sign up to and which is a flexible document and which can be amended as time goes on. Obviously, as a local authority, we're not farmers. So we engaged a adjoining tenant farmer to farm and manage the land on our behalf. And that so far has been an excellent relationship and I think both parties getting getting benefit from that. So finally, some sort of final comments. We're very happy to work with Environment Bank as a as a leading habitat bank provider. They have been excellent to work with. Haven't worked so much with Henry and Rory, but with your your colleagues, it's all been a very good experience. Now, our legal process was quite long, but this was really just down to the complexities of the the land itself. And and a couple of practical matters such as just his access and and water supply and those sort of nitty gritty things on the ground. And our transaction really took place at the very start of the statutory B N G scheme, which was which is obviously evolving as we worked, which which gave rise to a few challenges, I think, planning colleagues were still well, really didn't really understand it. And and I just starting to to understand it and some of the things that are in place now weren't in place, such as the gainsite register and responsible bodies. But I think as as time goes forward and this becomes a standard part of the scene, this will be a much easier process. And yeah, many local authorities don't own quite a lot of farmland. And it is a way, an excellent way of of diversifying your income and occupation of land. So I think that's all I have.
Big thank you again to Ruth, Phil, Henry and Rory, of course, it's been greatly appreciated. And yet, everyone else, look forward to seeing you all at the next PAS session.